Are you ready? We are going to begin today's regular meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now Tokyo ESS Toastmasters Regular Meeting December 28th. Meeting to order! First of all, excuse me for the... I mistake the... A little bit mistakes my way. So, I... 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 Just a time from 1 to 1 to 10. So, good afternoon ladies and gentlemen, again. So, I am the president of Tokyo ESS Toastmasters Club. So, today is already the end of the year. So, are you satisfied that end of year? Do you... Have you finished all resolution or objectives? You listed in the beginning of year. So, I believe so. But, of course not! But, don't afraid! We have still four days in this year. So, please stick to your objectives in the year. So, before moving on to our business, we have very, very few... many special guests. First of all, I'd like to introduce Toastmaster Koichi Harada. She is the president of Fantastica Toastmasters Club. And I have to say that she provided the venue for ourselves for today's meeting because I couldn't book ordinary place. So, let's give her very loud applause! Now, so I want to introduce other guests today. First, Mr. Yushiyama, please stand up. So you can face show your beautiful and shiny smile for me.
My name is Yushiyama. Nice to meet you. Also, I'm looking forward to joining this meeting and seeing you guys' speech. Nice to meet you.
Next, Ms. Wataru. She is a friend of Toastmaster Harada.
Yes.
Please stand up. And show your beautiful smile for me.
Thank you. I'm so happy to join this meeting. And he is my manager. He was a manager in the previous company. So, we had a drink last night. And then, he asked me to join this... Tell me this special meeting. So, thank you for allowing this venue. And I'm so happy to join this meeting. And I'm looking forward to hear and listen to all the members' speech. Thank you very much.
And next, Toast... Ah, not Toast... Ah, Toastmaster Sato. He is the president of... Five Year Isen Club.
Yes.
Yes, he is the president of Toastmasters... Five Year Toastmasters. Please stand up and show your beautiful and shiny smile for me. And all of guests, the first free like to enjoy today's whole meeting. And ideally, appreciate it if you mention some opinion or thought in the end of... And please enjoy. Now, moving on to today's club business. I have two items to report to you. So, first, the venue. The next venue. In the next venue, next to our regular meeting is January 11th in next year. So, we can use our ordinary place. Namely, Yidori Gao Ka Jiyuu Ka... Ah, Yidori Gao Ka Wenka Kai Ka. Then, room number is 10, 20. So, just in case, I will send you email. So, please check with you later. So, other any question about the venue? Okay, next. I went to next club business. So... Ah, wait a minute. I forgot. I have to report one award. To be honest, in the Division District 76 Contest in November, I have got award for member in this club. So, this is a special award. So, I have two... I want to... I'd like to make a small ceremony today. So, I list this memorable and fantastic member. So, when I call the game of your play, please come to the next round. I will get this special award. I have two? I think six. I have six. I have six or I have two. Then, first. The by displaying ex... By displaying example direction, this Toastmaster advanced a form of district to become selecting distinct district. Namely, his Toastmaster, Ken Tanich. Thank you. Let's applaud Toastmaster Yoboshi again! And I have other three award. Do you guess this four? First, right? Same sentence maybe. By displaying example direction, this Toastmaster advanced a form to the district to become select distinct district. And this three award is for one member. So, amazing! So, this was a... A very... As a... Aliment committee as... And... Aliment. 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 Sorry. Aliment. 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 Excuse me, my English is not so good. And marketing as more marketing committee. Committee. And also presidents distinguished club. This all award is for Toastmaster Asma. And thank you for the recognition to Toastmaster. Okay, thank you. And everyone, let's give you... Okay, I have finished my report. Are there any announcement from the row? No? Or Toastmaster Mori, do you... Could you report today's... Ah, he... Ah, they are okay. I ask instead of... I actually, I have a small tea party and also beer party after the end of this meeting. So, unfortunately, cafe is not decided yet. But I've already booked the wine bar, beer bar and the bakery station. So, this station was booked in 15 to 17. In today... Ah, 7... From 5 to 7 P A as booked. So, at the moment, I booked 10 seats. So, if you are interested in it, please don't... Please feel like to participate in it. And don't afraid, I already confirm the cancel policy. Most important in booking in drinking party. It's regardless the number of person, we can use this baking, this restaurant. If there only five person or if 15% can... Could be participating in it, this restaurant can accommodate. So, please feel like to participate in those cafe party and beer party. Then, if there are any other club business, we'd like to move on to today's main part. Yes. Yes. The business session. And today's... I'd like to introduce today's master of ceremony. Do you guess who? So, he is no other than me. Oh! This is my first time to take part in... Take a... Take a response... Take charge of president and also Toastmasters of the day. So, excited for myself. So, but I forgot my agenda, please. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon again! I am today's master of ceremony. Oh! Takeshi Saito, please give me... So, regardless the end of year, today, we have many role takers and speakers. I really appreciate your cooperation. So, first of all, I'd like to introduce today's supporter. First, today's grammarian. Toastmaster Rineena Kaneko is written, but she is absent. Anyone? Yeah. No chance?
Okay, I'll... Take the word of the day and provide and vote. So, one, two, three.
Please raise your hand if you can spontaneously take charge of today's grammarian. Oh!
I just heard he said spontaneous. Spontaneous is like a very flexible. Seems flexible. For example, you can say your spontaneous role of the grammarian is good for the... Good for the cooperation, for the meeting. You can use spontaneous. So, please use this word as much as possible when you are assigned as speaker. Please use spontaneous.
Thank you, Toastmaster. And everyone, I welcome your spontaneous support at any time. Okay. Please don't hesitate to it. Then, the next part is today's counter. Today's counter is Toastmaster Kimi Naraya. Please introduce your responsibility today.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Saito. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Good afternoon. My role is a counter. Okay, so what is a counter? This question goes to Toastmaster Harada.
Counting unnecessary words.
Yes, exactly. My responsibility. And then, okay, I am checking everyone's statement or speech and count the number of unnecessary words such as "ah" or "uh" or "well". Okay, anything I think is unnecessary. If you... If your unnecessary words is meaningful, okay, do that, but I count. Then, I report the number of unnecessary words as a part of the grammar general evaluation session. Evaluation session.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster. Next, I introduce today's timer. Toastmaster Yuki Ide. Please introduce your responsibility today.
Hello, I'm the timer of today. And my... My role is to manage all the time of the meeting is mainly the Toastmaster of the day. But to support him, I will control all the timers of the... I will control the time of each speaker. And I will rate the three times when the speaker reached the minimum time. And yellow, when the... When you have 30 second left for the table topic speakers and evaluate speakers. And one is left for the previous speech speakers. And when I raise this red card, that means your time has almost... Your time is almost up. So, please try to conclude your speech.
Thank you, Toastmaster. Then, I need to... Ah, okay, ah, one other role. Please, ballot counter. Ballot counter, Toastmaster Koichi Harada. Please introduce your role.
You are filling anyone? Good afternoon. So, do you have a comment seat?
Yes.
So, there are two purposes to write the ballot. Third purpose. So, the first purpose is to write your comment to the speaker and also to the facilitators of Toastmaster and other lawyers. So, and the second purpose is to vote the best speaker and the best evaluator and the best table topic speakers. Right? So, this is the purpose of this to write your comment seat. And basket reviews I created during the session. So, you can put the comments in that basket. Thank you.
Now, moving on to today's most reading session. Today's table topic session. So, this is an impromptu speech. So, I'd like to introduce today's table topic master. Today's table topic master is one of the most energetic and sometimes drunken Toastmasters. Do you guess who? Namely, his Toastmaster, Ken Tanish. And please, let's introduce... Welcome, Toastmaster Ken Tanish and the role.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Good afternoon. Welcome to one of the most thrilling events in Toastmasters activities. Table topic session. Well, I guess that the... Maybe some of you are not familiar with table topic speech. So, I will firstly briefly explain what it is. I will give you several questions. And I will assign some of our members in this room. And the members who was appointed by me cannot deny or refuse or to run away from this room. The members has to deliver a speech. Spontaneously and immediately without thinking. Okay. So, let's move on to today's first question. Year 2014 is coming to an end. Please describe your 2014 in one English word and tell us why you chose such word. Year 2014 is coming to the end. Please describe your 2014 in one English word and tell us why you took such word. This question goes to Toastmaster Harada.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for giving me the fantastic questions. Some... One word. Okay. Gross. Gross. So, as you know, I could participate in the Division B contest in this four contests. So, before the contest, I have never had the opportunity in making a humor speech. But during the contest, I could participate workshop, some workshops conducted by Toastmaster Naoki Tamura and Raska Hariza. And also, Toastmaster Asma and I had a one-on-one training in the contest after the regular meeting for two hours. He pointed at me some stories during the training. So, let me give you some example. Toastmaster Asma said that... Please read this sentence of your speech. "I am always calm and rational." "No," he said. "This is the first sentence of your speech, right? You need to convey your voice at the back of the room." Try again. "I am always calm and rational." So, this is my gross. Because he pointed at me to some delivery skill. So, because that's why I could grow... I could grow thanks to his advice. This is my words in 2014. Thank you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Harada. The next question. What do you want to accomplish next year and what? What do you want to accomplish next year and what? This question goes to Toastmaster Saito.
Oh! Thank you, Toastmaster. I was giving the question. My accomplishment next year is... Needless to say, to find my partner. Because I decided I get married until my 33 years old. Pretty much, at the moment, 31 years old. So, I don't have enough time. But, so, I have to... My project went from plant... Plant schedule. So, actually, I participated in matchmaking party two... At least two or three times every month. So, actually, I have to prepare the next matchmaking party after the end of this Toastmasters meeting. So, I have many, many objectives. So, actually, this to find my partner is first priority in the next year. Therefore, I have to achieve also you to my... By the way, timer is... Yeah. Okay, I can speak more. So, then, I... Ma... But, instead of it, I can't get the opportunity so well. Therefore, I have to make more strategy in order to more find my partner more effectively. Therefore, I have to... I will join... Many... Also, I will join many matchmaking party in the next year. But also, I have to make some... Sorry, I forgot what I wanted today. But anyway, I will find my partners by the end of next year. That's my duty and mission in the next year. Thank you, Toastmaster. Yes, of the... Toastmaster Sato.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Saito for your very passionate speech. I hope that you could find your partner next year. Okay, question number three. Most people will enjoy nine consecutive holidays this year. How will you spend such long holidays? Most people will enjoy nine consecutive holidays this year. How will you spend such long holidays? This question goes to Toastmaster Sato.
Okay, thank you for asking wonderful question. Nine holiday is a bit too long for me. But yeah, I think it's long enough to reflect myself. And this year... So, the beginning of this year, I made a new year's resolution. Free resolution. First, don't escape from English. Second resolution, don't escape from any role in Toastmasters. So, I decided to take present role. But, don't escape from speech. Oh! And I accomplished Advanced Quantitativer Silver to data next year. So, and so, I have... I still have enough time to decide. Next year, new resolution is nine is holiday. So, I maybe... Maybe, I will make my decision. Make a resolution. New year's resolution for next year, I will become D T N.
Oh!
But so, I have nine days. So, maybe I will reconsider. Or, and once... One more thing, I'm afraid. So, I have to make balance with family... What? Toastmaster. Work life, Toastmaster balance. So, I want to establish... I want to get both, the D T N and achieving meeting and cherish my partner. So, I will make a strategy for next year, for the next year plan within this nine is holiday. So, I need... I want to make this of this nine is holiday for improving myself. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Toastmaster Sato. This may be the last question. Question number four. Many people in Japan usually visit shrines to pray for the prosperity or safety of his or her family or job. What do you pray for when you visit shrine at the beginning of next year? Many people in Japan usually visit shrines to pray for the prosperity or safety of his or her family or job. What do you pray for when you visit shrine at the beginning of this year? This question goes to Toastmaster Mori.
Thank you very much for the easy question. Because this is very simple. Many people pray for health or the family marriage or the love life or the abundance of their salary or whatever. But I... Actually, when I was work jobless a year, I everyday went to the shrine and prayed for my new job. Every day, I went in shrine. But I thought it didn't work. Because whatever year, I was jobless. So, what happened the next? I... I give away my... I take away my praying. Just... I decided, I just pray. Nothing. And I said, "Thank you very much, everything you gave me." And every... After that, every year, only I went in a shrine and I didn't pray for nothing but every time say thank you for whole thing. Which made me feel very comfortable because I don't need to ask anything to God. So, I recommend you to say thank you before you pray any many things. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Saito. So, this concludes table topic session. But before moving to the next session, we would like to hear each speaker's speech. I guess, Toastmaster, you can please.
Toastmaster Harada, one is 22. Toastmaster Saito, one is 50 seconds.
Fifty?
Fifty. Toastmaster Sato, one is 58. Toastmaster Mori, one is 51 seconds.
Okay, I think that all speakers are eligible to do this. So, please choose the best table topic speaker you think and pass... Pass this basket. Okay, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. This concludes table topic session. And I will pass my control to our T M O D today.
Thank you, Toastmaster. I love this pretty exciting table topic session.
Now, moving on to today's most enjoyable session. Today's regular speech session. We have to... Today, we have three speakers. So, each speaker has three roles and so, experience in Toastmasters. Now, I'd like to introduce today's first speaker. Today's first speaker is the... Has distinct skill of leadership and education. And name is she is Toastmaster, Namie Mori. Please introduce and let's welcome Harada Pro.
Good afternoon, everyone. Happy holidays. Let me begin with the topic of leadership. Do you believe you have strong leadership at work or a family? A hobby like Toastmaster's activity? Do you believe you have leadership?
No.
No! Thank you very much for the honest answer. Actually, I thought I had no leadership skill before I took a class of my favorite teacher, Larry Clark.
When I was twenty-eight, I went to Hawaii for a short program of business school. There are some required class. And in the class, which is, which is the name of the self-leadership class. Is the most, many time we spent. And just the beginning of the self-leadership class. I thought, what is self-leadership? I, I have no idea about it. I thought I have no leadership in the past. Because from childhood, I was always backside of the class. I hate to be in front of people. And I have no experience of leader of the club or class or club activity and also at work. But the Larry class begin and it said, everyone is a leader of yourself. Whatever you experienced, whoever you are, wherever you are and wherever you live. You are the leader of yourself and you can be a leader of others as well. He start like this. And I doubted his pain, what he pain? At the class, he gave us one book, Transcending. And some of you may know the book because also in Japanese, there's a same book, Japanese version of the book. And we, we had assessment of from the book. We went to the website and answered around three hundred questions of mind or brain or what. And just click yes or no. And after we took the assessment, the result shows five strength of your potential. And for me, the potential is arrange, responsibility, harmony, relationship, interaction. And assessment said, each person have greater potential for success in specific areas. And the key to human development is building on who you already are. After I took assessment, I and other students took assessment. We saw other strengths, five strengths. And we discuss about our strengths and the leadership we have. And I thought, if the life teaching is correct, I think I can, I can try and lead. In the result of the strength, this book shows the strengths of thirty-four category. And such as achiever or maximizer or bereaved, command, communication, derivative, individualization, input, learner, maximizer, possibility, reliever, help assurance, discipline, focus, developer. There are many types of people who have or who already have. After the class finished, I try my best if I can be leader. And at that point, I joined at the Toshmaster. And I joined new company. After that, I thought I doubted life teaching still. But I became a CEO of Akabane by Linga Toshmaster Club. And the next year, I, I became a president of Akabane by Linga Toshmaster. But still doubted if I'm a good leader or not. But finish, finish the whole one year of the presidency. I took nine decision mine at the end. I didn't pursue them to take the manual to every member. But miracle happened. And I'm still learning. Now, in the changing process of the working place, many staff were gone and new staff were coming. And I'm thinking, I want to be the manager in a workplace. I think you also have each strengths. And if you can believe you, you have strengths in yourself already, even if you have experienced or not. And also, if you see other strengths as well and connect people, it would be the great chemistry as a team. I know Toshmaster Atobe has a strength of individualization and arrange or learn. I know Toshmaster Sato have positivity, strength, strong positivity. So connecting other people and to our team is a key to be successful. So I believe everybody can be the leader in your side. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Toshmaster Mori. Thank you, Toshmaster, Toshmaster Mori, you have really powerful and positive speech. Actually, I bought this. So you can distribute and write only one thousand nine hundred years. So please try to read. You can understand your potential in as leaders. Now, let's introduce today's second speaker. Ah, sorry. One minute silence, please. Thank you, Toshmaster. Now, let me introduce today's second speaker. Everyone, you are so lucky today because you can see the moment, the one person to achieve first highest goal as competent communication manager. So as you know, the, our basic manual is the problem is competent communication manual. He achieved finally first tense speech. Maybe his Toshmaster was Yosuke. Today's, his speech title is My Favorite Tostas. My Favorite Tostas. Let's welcome and welcome with big and applause, Toshmaster Yosuke.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Please remember, when you are in free time, is your hands occupied by your smart devices? If yes, let's put your smart devices on the desk and switch to novels. Because novel cause you are many good feelings and emotions. And also touching heart good sentences makes your sense of words strong. And it's very good for your strengths in your communication skill, knowing good sentences. So I'd like to strongly recommend you to read good novels. And today, I would like to introduce my favorite posters, which has a good sentences. And also for the novel lovers, I also hope my suggestion or recommendation contribute to your good novel lives. First of all, my first suggestion is Miss Miyuki Miyake. She is a very famous author and mainly writes about mystery. But the location of the story is very vertical from period or modern or fantasy or even, what should I say? A psychic. But and you can, so you can enjoy multiple situation and very deep and calm sentences of her. Also, she writes mystery novels, but I feel she, she is not focusing on the strategy to solve the topic of mystery. Rather, she focus on the feeling or movement of the characters inside after the incident or during the incidents. It delivers you very good knowledge or emotion or from the characters movement or insight. She writes many novels and my, my recommendation is Modern one, especially, sorry, it's very small to Kasha. Very famous one and Mohouhan. And very recent one, Solomon. Thank you. And, but please, one difficulty is those novels is so long, extremely long. For example, Kasha have five books and Solomon, they show have six books. So it's good for waiters long night. But you don't have time to feel boring. Rather, you can't stop reading once you start reading. And the next suggestion is Mr. Jiro Asada. You may hear the title Poppy or Mibuki Shite, the drama or movie. And she, he is the author of those titles. And he is famous among his fans as a cry maker. His sentence makes us a cry or even you will actually start crying after reading his novel. Actually, when, when I read his novel, I really feel for this author try, try to make myself cry. It's very obvious way to cry. But anyway, it's very, finally, I start crying after reading his novel. My suggestion is Prison Hotel. It's kind of old novel. And it's, the location of this novel is the hotel run and operated by Japanese gang. Yakuza own and operates the hotel and many visitors, including gang or policeman or other unique guest come visit to this hotel and make some happenings. And why I recommend this novel is character is very attractive. The old gangster with old fashion soul and very, very deep humanity. And also his nephew, he is also the young, young novel writers with very old mind, but very have pure mind. And also, the character is so attractive and make comedy and humorous stories. And even after reading the novel, you may also cry. So I really, really, really recommend this novel, Prison Hotel. This is my, I read this novel over and over many years, so I really recommend. And last suggestion is Mr. Tenu Miyamoto. He's not so famous, I believe. And because unfortunately, his recent novel is not so good. But his novels published around nineteen ninety is brilliant. His award-winning novels like Yushun or Kinshu. Kinshu is, was awarded for Naoki Show. And Yushun, Yushun is also Yoshikawa Eijin Nakusho, I believe. And this, those novels are also excellent for his deep human drama. For example, this Yushun is the novel about salaried industry. The character is mainly the young man who are in salaried industry and also old CEO who buys a salaried. But he is about losing his position. And there's some conflict between characters and many incident happens. And he write deep inside of each characters. And finally, some character get his dream and some character lose his dream. And the illustration is very, very excellent. And after reading this novel, you may feel very heartwarming feeling. So I also recommend this novel, Yushun or Kinshu. I know there's a lot of, huge amount of good novels in the world. And I also know many, many good novels. But I, today I introduce some, one, some of the good novels. Currently famous authors like Teido Jun or Higashi Teigo or Chakta Naoki. Is also good, good writer and novelist. And his, their novel contain a lot of entertainment. But those three writers write very deep emotion by inside of each characters. So once you read it, you can learn many, many good sentences. So we, many of you are studying English. But on the other hand, it's good to learn good Japanese so that you can strengthen your sense of words. And it contributes your English skill too, I believe. So and as I show, don't worry about the size. Those are Japanese book size. And you can easily switch from smart device to this size. And also, those are very old novels, so you can easily get used to bookshop or library. So how about spending your year and new year holidays with good world of novels? I wish you and you all, you all guys spend good new year, year and new year holidays.
And congratulations, you all, you have achieved the competent communications. You are, from now, the CC title was given to him. So let's give him the round of applause again. Now, I have one minute's time. Okay, thank you, Toastmaster, yeah. Then, now let me introduce today's third speaker. First third speaker is, I don't need to say, explain anymore. He is the High Highsmar of Toastmasters. And also great founder of Toastmasters. He is Toastmaster Kimi Nai Asma. Let's welcome speech title. Ah, excuse me, please. Speech title is, his speech title is Don't Let The Ball. This project is interpersonal communication, his title is Longer. Longer. Ah, excuse me. So, his, his title is Don't Let The Ball, Toastmasters Way Over Conflict. His, his project is interpersonal communication, he's asserting yourself effectively. Let's welcome Toastmaster Kimi Nai Asma, let's applaud the applause.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Toastmaster today's title. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. In our daily lives, we have many situations, we come across many situations where we want to complain. But let's remember, we are Toastmaster. What we, how we communicate should be always constructive. So today, my challenge is asserting myself effectively from the interpersonal communication, as Toastmaster today's title just explained. So what I'm going to do, the first of all, I'm going to explain how to be assertive and compare with the other situation where we are aggressive in the communication. So you will understand how to make an assertive communication, okay? And then I will do the role play with the help of our great contributor, President Kobayashi of Pro Fantasy Toastmasters Club. She will join our role play. And then we provide you the two scenarios so you can compare before and after. And then I'm going to wrap up what we have learned in my role. Okay, the time is forty minutes maximum. So, um, I think all of you have this hand out. Okay, if you don't have this hand out, you are not lucky today. So you see two people, two personas here. The first one on the left is a person who knows the assertive communication. He is smiling, I don't know he or she, but this person is smiling, okay? On the right, this person's communication style is aggressive. So he looks very mean, right? In the Toastmasters intercommunication, interpersonal communication manual teaches us four steps to be, to have an assertive communication. Starting from number one, state the problem or the state your uncomfortable feeling, uh, uncomfortable, why you are uncomfortable, okay? Number two, tell your feeling, tell the person how you feel. And number three, specify a solution. Okay, we need to bring our situation to win, win, so we specify a solution. Then the final one is describe the consequences or the result, positive result. So by following these four steps, we will have an assertive communication rather than aggressive communication. Now, I'm going to have two role play sessions. Let's imagine, we are just started our flight from Narita to Las Vegas.
Oh!
To make big money, right? You want to make big money, right? And then, um, we are sitting in an economy class unfortunately, because we guys are all poor. Not able to purchase them first-class ticket or business class ticket, right? So the first scene is an aggressive conversation. And then the second role play is the assertive conversation. I am a passenger and I am complaining to cabin attendant, who is Toastmaster Kobayashi Miye.
Oh!
So we just started our flight, okay, no, no big hand needed at this moment, okay? Excuse me, excuse me. I have a fever and I have a running nose and I'm not comfortable. So, um, I've been, I told you that you bring the blanket as soon as possible. But I have been waiting here for ten minutes, but nothing happened. Why you doing?
I'm sorry, sir, but actually, as you see, that passengers is so many.
I know, I know, I know, but you know, I told you just ten minutes ago.
Oh, yeah, but yes, we will do it right now, but however, first of all, we have to fix.
Yeah, I know, but I don't need apology or excuse, okay, just do as I request.
Yes, sir, but I would like to do my best, but could you wait a little bit more, a few more minutes?
So how, how, how much time do I need to wait?
Well, let's see, like, like.
You have to promise now.
Yes, but I, you know, that there are so many passengers and that stuff are limited. I understand your feeling, but.
Yeah, please tell your boss, please now, I think you are not the right person to talk.
Yes, but.
Do, do as I say, do as I say. I don't need to have a discussion with you.
Well, oh, yeah.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, but, okay, I'll, I'll try to do my best, sir. I can't, I can't help, I can't, I can't help.
Did you say something?
I'm laughing, laughing.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, have you seen or have you experienced this kind of communication before? I'm not asking you did this, but I, I might, I told you, I am asking you whether you have seen somebody yelling, screaming or taking this kind of attitude, right? But we are Toastmaster. Welcome to our Toastmasters world, okay? Now, we are going to, I'm going to show you an assertive communication. This is a better model as a Toastmaster, okay? Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Um, actually, I told you to bring the blanket about ten minutes ago, but I still waiting. And I know you are busy. Uh, you should please bring the blanket, because I have a fever and I have a running nose and I feel cold. Because the room temperature in this cabin is a little bit cold.
Oh, yes, I understand, thank you, I'm sorry about this. However, at this moment, there are some other emergency that I have to manage. So could you wait a little bit more?
Okay, um, but to be honest, I feel cold and if I don't get the blanket as soon as possible. I think, you know, I have a fever, headache now, so my headache would be worse, that's what I'm afraid of.
Oh, that's right, I understand that. Alright, so I will try to do my best, but cannot do it immediately. So could you little bit wait and, but I promise that I will bring that blanket for you.
Alright, yeah, I understand. So, um, as I told you that, you know, this is my health problem. I understand people there are waiting for service, but it seems they are healthy, but not healthy.
Right.
Yeah, so that, that is my problem, I'm sorry.
Right, I understand. How, how you feel, do you already feel kind of like?
Right, yeah, I, yeah, my headache started already, yeah.
Alright, so there are some priorities, but I will do my best and try to do it as fast as possible for you.
Yeah, so, please don't forget to bring.
Sure, yeah, I promise, alright, thank you, I'll be in hurry and I'll be back right away. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so ladies and gentlemen, I think this is a better communication, I hope. So what I, thank you very much, right away.
Thank you.
Toastmaster Kobayashi. Please, please sit, please sit there, okay? First of all, I tried to follow these four steps. First, I state the problem. If you remember my first role play, my communication was not direct. While I told the cabin attendant that I had a fever, I had a running nose, but that is not what I wanted. My hope or my wish was that I need a blanket, right? So comparing with the scene, scenario one, the first role play and second role play, what I did was state the problem. I told her to bring the blanket ten minutes ago, but nothing happened, that was the problem. So I tried to clearly explain, state the problem. Then I tried to tell how I felt, because I had a fever, I had a headache, I had, no, no, the headache will come soon. But I had a running nose, so I told her my feeling. Then, well, I had some chat or the conversation with the cabin attendant, but I then specify a solution. Maybe I failed to do that, but lastly, I, during the conversation with the cabin attendant, I tried to describe the consequences. If she bring the blanket now, I would feel much better. So the four steps are the path we need to follow to have an assertive communication. Now there are some tips. The first one is, there are three tips here. The first one is be direct. Instead of telling, you know, my, the health problem like running nose or headache, I should be direct in saying that the problem she created, okay? That is a problem I want to solve. And then the next one is be pleasant. I try to be a nice person to her. However, in my first role play, I was a very mean person. And then tip number three is be calm. The first one, I aggressive, I express my emotion, which probably create negative emotion to my opponent, which is not causing a good communication. So, in summary, in an assertive communication, we need to follow the four steps and remember the three tips. But most important tips or the most important thing we need to remember will be explained by counterbatt, CB, alright? So CB, at least welcome her with a big hand. I learned from you a lot about assertive or being assertive, okay? Um, other than what I explained today, what is, from your perspective, the most important things be in assertive?
Alright, it's, I said, through this role play?
Yes, and in general.
In general, alright. Actually, we haven't talked what to do until we do this role play. But the difference between these two, the first role play, I felt, I looked down and I, I received a lot of pressure and I felt uncomfortable talking with him. But the other one, I felt, this is the most important thing, I believe, for that communication, I was respected. Although I couldn't provide what he wants and I couldn't do whatever he requested immediately, but I felt like I was respected, so I felt like I would do something good for him, that's how I felt. So this is the big difference between being aggressive and assertive. Maybe I will be like scared from the assertive Toastmaster Asma and maybe I will do something for him, but not next time. Maybe I will prioritize to the other people, but he is, you know, treat me as with a respect. I will put priority on him because we have good communication, that's what I know.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, let's remember what happened on the Korean Airlines recently. The Vice President of the Korean Airlines, she didn't take the, take the assertive approach. And what she took was aggressive approach. And then that became a big news, right? So, this is just between you and me. If she was a member of Toastmasters and if she had a chance to learn interpersonal communication, how to have an assertive communication, she would still be a Vice President of Korean Airlines. Now, so, but, but anyway, thank you very much, Toastmaster Kobayashi, to make my role play more realistic and valuable and meaning, meaningful. And let me give a big round of applause to Toastmaster Kobayashi for making my role play really successful. Thank you very much. And lastly, our conversation was not planned, it was spontaneous.
Thank you, Toastmaster Asma, giving us very useful suggestion and Toastmaster Akki. Kobayashi, thank you for your spontaneous cooperation, thank you. Now we have one minute's time.
Okay, thank you everyone. Now we have one stop break. So now we have twenty, twenty, twenty five. Then I'll wait until twenty five minutes. So first suggestion was Asama.
English, I'm a student, I'm a student. So this is my job, I'm a student, yeah.
It's actually difficult.
I'm a speaker who's a speaker. I'm 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 a speaker.
You have to hear it.
Okay, everyone are ready. Let's start for the meeting soon. Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Now, let's begin today's rapid heart of session. Yay! Welcome to today's session. I forgot to get the timers report. So TOSMA San Ide, please give the timers report to previous each speaker.
TOSMA San Morui, seven minutes thirty.
Seven minutes thirty.
Three down.
Three down. TOSMA San Wajidu, ninety and fifty-two seconds.
Ninety-two, fifty-two. Fifty-two.
And TOSMA San Aruna, thirteen minutes and fifty-nine seconds.
Thirteen minutes, fifty-nine. Okay, thank you, TOSMA San Ide. Then all speakers are ready. So please for each speaker, your best table, best each speaker from table to table. I don't know.
Prepare.
Only prepare. Select your best speaker. Now, let's move to today's evaluation session. Now, I'd like to introduce today's general evaluator. The general evaluator is the brilliant, the president of fantastic TOSMA San Club. He's also known as first rate speaker seen from any level in previous TOSMA San contests. Now, let's welcome TOSMA San Kimi Kobayashi with an applause.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am so excited to hear about your speech and also evaluation from that. So today, we have three speeches. Therefore, we will hear three evaluations. Let me introduce the first evaluator. First evaluator is, first evaluator, Koji Harada. For the first speaker, Megumi Moritz, on the last slide. They have project is manual project three. So let's welcome TOSMA San Harada as an evaluator.
Good afternoon again. Congratulations on your completing the manual number three, TOSMA San Morui. So based on the project number three, there are two purpose. One is a general purpose and also one is a specific purpose. And regarding general purpose, there are four way to convey the purpose. One is informing. One is persuading. One is entertaining. And the last one is inspiring. I think that your speech, the general purpose of your speech is to persuade, right? And also, I think the specific purpose of your speech that is that we should make our club success by connecting our leadership skill, which every member has. So that means the important things is that every member has leadership skill. This is a key message which I received from your speech. And regarding the body parts and the beginning and the body parts and the conclusion. So in the beginning, you said that I have no leadership skill. I think it's a room for improvement because you need to, you need a stronger opening in the beginning instead of you have no leadership skill. So I recommend that you would say, my leadership skill is blah blah blah, right? So instead of you saying that I have no leadership skill, right? So in the beginning, it's a, there is room for improvement. And regarding the body parts, the first body is about business school in Hawaii, right? So Riley Clark said that everyone can be a leader. It's a good point to convey your key message. Everyone can be a leader. It's a good point. And also regarding body number two, you talked about the strength finder. So there are three hundred questions to assess our leadership skill, right? And so we can recognize our own leadership based on the door assessment. I think it's also a good point that we can, we have our own leadership skill. It's a good point. And body number three, you talked about your new company and also you talked about the TOSMA San's career. I think it's also good. So you became the president of Akabane, right? So this is also a good point. And regarding conclusion, so you said that your key message, your key message was that we should connect leadership skills that every member has. This is a key message which I received from your speech. It's also a good point. You emphasized your key message at the conclusion. I think it's also a good point. So in summary, so your speech, general purpose of your speech was that to persuade someone. And the specific purpose is was that we should make our club success by connecting our leadership skills which every member has. This is a key message which I received from your speech. This is the end of my evaluation. Thank you.
Now, I am pleased to welcome the second evaluator. The second evaluator for the second speaker, Yoji Wajidu's international speech. It's Kenta Ebochi. Let's welcome Kenta Ebochi.
Hey, good afternoon once again, ladies and gentlemen. Firstly, I would like to say my congratulations to TOSMA San Yoji Wajidu, who successfully accomplished... Sing it another time. Go for it, go for it again. Number ten! I heard from him that it took one year and half, what, one year and half year to accomplish this great project. So this is wonderful thing. Firstly, I like the things. Okay. So before evaluating TOSMA San Wajidu's speech, let us briefly review the objectives of his. CC number ten is hire your audience. The first objective is to inspire the audience by appealing the global motives and challenging the audience to achieve a higher level of belief or achievement. The second objective is to appeal the audience's needs and emotion with stories, anecdotes, and quotes to add to them. And the third one is avoid using jokes. So, TOSMA San Saito, what was the purpose or what was the point of inspiration that TOSMA San Yoji is going to wanted to tell the audience?
To by introducing his book.
Yes, yes, what is the purpose or inspiration that he want to make?
To be up to, be up, you, you like story into the speech.
Okay. Yeah, I think that that was one of the purposes, but the message I catch was to let's read novels. Oh, let's read novels. So... Okay. So... So by showing many examples of novels, I guess that many of you catch the message that he really, really wanted the audience member to read novels doing this nice passive qualities. And the second thing I really, really liked was he introduced a very famous authors of novel. For example, when Miyuki Miyada's name was said during his speech, everyone, every single person said, "Ah, oh, they know Miyagi Miyuki." So the strong connection with novels and audience would successfully create, that's why I'm... Oh, and the room for improvement is, as I suggested, you refrain from using a lot of notes. And also, I would like you to enrich your vocal variety. For example, if you want to stress something, then you can use very strong voice. And if it's not important point, then you can weaken your voice. And also, you can use very stiff stage effectively. For example, when you introduce Miyagi Miyagi and Miyagi Miyuki's story, for example, you stand left side of the stage, Yasada Jiro or other author. Those kind of movements can be one of the good tips to make your speech more better. Anyway, and thank you very much for your great speech. And please, and once again, give him a very round, very big round of applause.
Thank you. Alright, thank you, TOSMA San Ebochi. Now, the final evaluation list. That is TOSMA San, TOSMA San Ide. Ide, alright, are you ready? So, so they take a time as well. Spontaneously, could you?
Yes, yes, I spontaneously take.
Oh, how spontaneous!
Alright, so evaluation is always spontaneous. TOSMA San Ide, are you ready? So it must be difficult, but be equal. We can be very strict for TOSMA San Asma's evaluation. Alright, let's welcome the strict evaluator, TOSMA San Ide.
Hey, good afternoon again, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, thank you, TOSMA San Asma and Kobayashi for your great speech and role play. So comparing with two role play, very aggressive and being assertive, we could see what is effective of assertive communication. So in the, using four steps, stating the, state the problem, tell the feelings that, you know, he doesn't feel well and he need the cup and he has a headache and fever. So he act calmly in the second part of the communication of the story is what he want. But in the first situation, let's remind the first situation, he only asked what he want. And but in the second one, not only he asked, he, he stated the problem, but he also draw the communication with the story. Because he respected during the communication, not only about the voice, but with the communication like, "I know you are busy." Like such of the communication, felt the... You can find that he is, I know she is busy, but he still respect her. So that was very good point to understand that what is the assertive communication. And also, yes, even though respecting others, what he would like to say, what his request, was always direct and very shortly saying those things. That was a very good point. And if I suggest one thing, I, I thought, even in the aggressive situation, because of Asma San's character, the voice is always cold. So I, for the Kobayashi San,
Rules.
I, I, I thought, you know, she is embracing a little bit in the first communication, but still feels something like the same, a bit same. So maybe Kobayashi... So maybe Kobay, Asma-san can hear more in there. I say what, that I needed come immediately, please bring it. And I don't want to say, I don't want to hear your excuse or something like that. Maybe you can say that, that is my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, time is important for the evaluation, and I collect.
Time is important.
Time is important.
Two minutes thirty for Harada-san. For Harada, okay? And Harada-san. Toastmaster Kenta Eboshi, four minutes.
Ah.
Four minutes.
Toastmaster Idae, three minutes twenty-eight seconds.
Wow! Alright, now is this the general evaluator's role to qualify Toastmaster Kenjiwa Shizu or not? Is this my role in Tokyo ESS? Well, competition is, I wanna be very strict for the time management, but at the same time, competition is very exciting, right? So this time, as the end of the year, I will qualify Toastmaster Kenta Eboshi. But be careful. Alright, so all three evaluators are eligible to vote. Okay, please vote. Let's have one minute time. Is somebody timing for me?
Oh, sorry.
Can I start?
Spontaneously vote.
And I spontaneously ask. So can I start my general evaluation, alright? So it's gonna be for seven minutes, is that alright? Alright, good. Alright, hello again. I'm Tokyo ESS. I am so excited to be here, because this is my second time to visit Tokyo ESS meeting. And also, I participated in the Chaka ceremony. So I feel like Tokyo ESS is my relative club, right? From Fantastica, as my brother Asma-san is also here, right? So in my general evaluation, I will talk about mainly the evaluator or evaluators, but also flow of the meeting and the strength of the Tokyo ESS. That's what I'm going to talk about. Let me start with the three evaluators' evaluation. Then I will talk about Toastmaster of the Day and the friends of your club, things like that, small things, alright? Because I love evaluation. Alright, let me start with the first evaluator, Toastmaster Harada. Where are you, of this, Toastmaster Harada? Alright, thank you very much for your evaluation. Your evaluation, I like your style. You look very confident. And as an evaluation is like one complete speech, confident and good delivery skills. That's what I admire at Toast. And also, the structure was very clear and easy to follow, easy to listen to, that's great, alright? But I will focus on your area for improvement as an evaluator, alright? So since to me, your evaluation was summarizing her speech, right? But I think what you need to focus as an evaluator is more like focus, you know, step into her, you know, skills and how she can be even better speakers. If I were you, what I'm gonna say could be, like she circulated books, is that necessary? It was distracting for me, because looking at the cover of the book doesn't make any, you know, impact for the speech. So I would mention about that for the speech. And also, her speech was very good, and you know, I have a different opinion from you. In the beginning, she talked about I don't have a leadership. But in the end, she said that now I know that I have a leadership. It shows the contrast from beginning, she changed, transformed by knowing the leadership. So this is the different opinion, but that's what I thought her great effort, that she made a speech. And also, what I wanted to hear from her was, she talked about DCP in Akabane things. But I wanted to hear more was, how she, you know, you use your arrangement skill or harmony, your strengths, apply to the club members, then increase the DCP things. That specific story could be more inspiring. That's what I would mention if I was evaluator of her. But your evaluation, you look very confident, which is a very important thing as an evaluator. Thank you very much. And second evaluator, Toastmaster Kenta Eboshi, is the time over today? First of all, I really like that you celebrated his completion of his speech. That is the good attitude, that evaluator always know that, you know, speaker's feelings and where is he in the stage, so this is great thing you've done. And also, you asked the message from, you know, from Saito-san, but maybe you don't have to wait for his answers, because evaluator, you would tell what the message you received. That's what I thought. And if, and however, he, Mr. Wasizu completed his inspirational speech, I think Kenta Eboshi used to be tough on his, even more. Tokyo ESS should make a talk speaker, you know, Wasizu-san. I like your speech very much, and I was encouraged to read novels, because recently, I started to, you know, using device and doing your setting all the time. So you try to change my, you know, habits, especially in this winter season. That is a value of your speech. But inspire is more than that, I think. If you wanna inspire your audience, this is more like for me, informative speech. I understand Miyagi Miyuki, three authors you mentioned, they are great. And they are not only describing, you know, stories, they are good at, they have an insight. And when if we read, we can expand our lives. And you are the great novel lover, that you state yourself very clearly. If so, how you changed, how you are changed by reading these books? That's what I wanted to hear. And if you are completing, you are going to complete your test project, you should not have your memo on with you. I was a little disappointed, because I was so excited to hear your speech with all the nice books here, and your opening was very dramatic. But you let your note, you know, although you are trying to inspire people, forget about it. This is your completion, right? So this is what I... I like your way that you, I received your message that, you know, expand your, you know, vocabulary and reading is, you know, something very special experience. So I deeply appreciate that you share your limited experience with me, thank you. And finally, Toastmaster Asma, this is my message for you is exactly the same message as Toastmaster, Toastmaster, that your evaluator said. And the most important thing is contrast, aggressive and assertive. You should show more contrast as you realize. So because you are already quite assertive person, I believe. Therefore, maybe you should practice being aggressive.
Okay.
But I think through your message, you know, people understand. And Toastmaster Idae, listen, I liked your evaluation, because you showed example clearly, you know, how to, you know, show aggressive part of, you know, the speech. So then Toastmaster Asma clearly understand what to do it. Show example is one of the most important thing for the evaluation, and you did great job, I think. And in the beginning, you were a little bit very nervous, and in the end, you smiled more than before. So more smile will convince speakers more and encourage speakers more. So I recommend to you to smile a little bit more, alright? And regarding this whole meeting, that was very focused. And I liked the Toastmaster of the Day and President openly was very bright and happy and warmly welcomed the guest, I like it very much, thank you. And as a Toastmaster of the Day, the ten minutes delay, that cannot be avoided, it's okay. But if so, you should mention about how time arrangement should be changed in the earlier stage, then we feel more comfortable. And but although in all, this class is very active and meeting was very well focused, and I enjoyed it very much, thank you very much.
Okay, everyone, are you ready? Now we have most excitement, excited session, award session. Who are today's best award? I announce from today's best table topics. Today's best table topics goes to... Toastmaster Koichi Harada! Okay, here we go, say cheese. Next, I announce today's best evaluator. Also, Toastmaster Koichi Harada! Congratulations, okay? Here we go, three, two, one. Finally, I announce today's best speaker. Today's best speaker goes to... Toastmaster Kiminari Asma! Congratulations, congratulations!
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's make sure, you know, three, two, one. Congratulations! Now, let me control, return my control, ah, please.
Accounters report, the grammarian report and the missing, so they report the number of unnecessary words.
Okay.
And please, thank you very much. Toastmaster Saito six times, Toastmaster Saito six times, Toastmaster Harada twice, Toastmaster Mori zero. Toastmaster Three times, Toastmaster Harada six times, Toastmaster Kobayashi twice, Toastmaster Eboshi three times.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so, everyone, so let me, ah, please, Toastmaster Harada.
Today's board of morning report is...
Morning, morning, morning.
Board of day is, Toastmaster Saito twice, Toastmaster Eboshi once, Toastmaster Asma once, and Harada twice, and Kobayashi twice. That's all I could get, and do you have, did I miss someone saying? Okay, and as a grammarian, I won't point out grammatical errors, but I want to point out strong words you said in the meeting. I like the saying of the Toastmaster Saito, well-planned schedule. I like the word, Toastmaster Saito said, "Don't escape from English, don't escape from role, and don't escape from the three sentences, is very strong, very good." And I, the strong word is, Toastmaster Asma said, "Just do as I request", and "Just do as I do, just do as I said", a very strong, famous word. And I heard Toastmaster Wasizu said, many, perhaps more than ten times, he said good sentences or good novel. So if you said more than ten times in one word, I would recommend you to show other expression like elaborated novel, elaborated sentences, or the considered, or many good expressions, explanation, good word you can use. Have good, alternative to good. Thank you very much.
Yes, participation in today's meeting. Now, let me return my control back to myself. Everyone, good afternoon again, everyone. Did you enjoy today's year-end meeting?
Yes!
Thank you, I was also very satisfied. So that, I don't have enough time, now moving on to today's guest debate. I appreciate if you share your thought in this meeting from Toastmaster Kobayashi.
Alright, thank you very much, and I talked about as a general evaluator, so I enjoyed it and I liked the reaction of all guests, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thanks to today's, thanks to Toastmaster Kobayashi. Let's give her again big applause. Next, Mr. Yoshima.
Thank you for giving me a good opportunity to join this meeting, I really enjoyed it. And yeah, I feel in a meeting that your passion about speech is very great and fantastic and inspired. And yeah, this made me able to join this meeting again, and I'd like to become a member of Tokyo.
I will conduct some ceremony in the next meeting, so please let me know your attendance. And for Toastmaster Kobayashi. Next, this is Matara-san, Toastmaster.
It was nice to join this meeting, and I was inspired by all the speaker's speech. And then, so actually, I have no chance to have such kind of speech in front of a lot of people recently. But I learned a lot of things in this meeting, how to involve the audience in your speech, and then how to inspire the audience. So I'd like to learn a lot about public speech more, so thank you.
And next, this Toastmaster Sado.
Yes. Thank you very much, because I was very, I was very inspired, especially your spontaneous role dating. And why I visit here, because Toastmaster Harada visited our family club two months ago. And so I think visiting our club also inspires and improve yourself. So if you have a chance, we visit, I'm a Toastmaster. We have a meeting, second, fourth Friday at nine o'clock, ah, seven o'clock. And but we belong to same division, right?
Yes.
But we will compete, compete as a division contest, they explain. But we improve together, and we go to last days together. With Korea here.
And everyone, if you get, please take free to participate in our meeting, I think that's a much. But we don't have enough time. But we don't have enough time, so let's up today's meeting. But before closing today's meeting, I'd like to mention as the closing remark, closing remark. So, I want to remind you the club vision. Toastmaster Eboi, do you remember about club vision? In the next... Let's be a world champion of comics! So our vision is beyond yourself. I made our vision in the beginning of our this semi, uh, first period of our present part. So, the reason I made this vision is that I would like all of you to go beyond yourself of today. So, therefore, I ask to you whether you satisfied this year. So, I think it's good, even one thing you overcome or achieved one thing which haven't achieved in previously. Therefore, please make something or some, something you overcome or you achieved. And myself, I'm really satisfied today's for this year-end meeting and first semi annual period. Because thanks to all of you, I could make very difficult decision such as taking a host of division B contest or go through any other challenge situation. Therefore, I think I'd like to go beyond next further higher step with all of you. Thank you so much. Now, I'd like to, I want, I'd like to wrap up today's meeting. The, now, the Tokyo ESS December twenty eighth meeting is to adjourn.